Committee meeting today is Tuesday, September 12th. Mrs. Camp House, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Atwood.
Present.
Ms. Bowden.
Present.
Mrs. Verica.
Present.
Mr. Taylor.
Present.
Mrs. Cole.
Present.
You would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
No motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Camp House?
Mr. Atwood.
Yes.
Ms. Bowden?
Yes.
Mrs. Verica?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor? Yes.
Cole?
Yes. With our agenda approved, we'll go ahead and move right on onto item four. This is our discussion items. Item 4.01, we have the Native American Guardians Association, and we have Bill Deekman and Eunice Davidson on the line, and I am going to turn this over to Mr. Atwood to introduce our speakers.
Sure, thank you, Madam President. Yeah, I have invited the Native American Guardians Association to tonight's meeting to speak and present to us for a few minutes. Over the past few years, we always get a couple of emails or phone calls or something related to the issue of the icons that we use and the moniker that we have and whatnot. And when I respond to these correspondences, I always, I always say that I'm happy to reach out and partner with the Native American Association because, you know, what we use as our moniker and what we use as our icons is historical. There's a historical reference to it. It's something that's proud and meaningful. So, to a Native American Association, they were kind enough to offer to do an assessment of our use of our moniker and icons that we use. Take a look at the history of why we're the Norwood Indians, and they're here tonight to talk to us about, you know, the use of the moniker of Indians and the use, you know, the cultural history of this community that we have. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Deekman and Mrs. Davidson, and we're glad to have you. So, thank you for coming.
Thank you for having us. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm using my iPad, so I wasn't sure. Yeah, so I'd like to introduce myself. I am the president of Native American Guardians Association. I'm one of the founding members, along with a couple other guys at the time, back in 2014. And we started the organization, just a grassroots organization of people around the country that were tired of hearing about our names and images being dropped from colleges, from, you know, professional teams, from high schools, and we decided to try and do something about it. So we really got a late start compared to what the other, the opposition's been doing for over 40 years. And we've made great strides along the way. We have many Native Americans in this country who have joined on to our team. We really don't have members, we have more volunteers. I think we see that our application online is a volunteer application. So we probably have close to 5,000 volunteers around the country, which is quite a bit. Nobody else can say that, really. But anyway, I'm from the Spirit Lake Tribe in North Dakota. I'm a tribal enrolled member. I'm a full-blood Dakota Sioux. I grew up on the reservation. I went to school. I went to boarding school, philanthropy Indian school. I mean, I never had any problems. I was always, I guess probably a good student. I don't know. But anyway, then I married, I married a non-Native. He's of the Norwegian. We have two children who are both grown. We have, we have three grandchildren. We have a great-granddaughter. And I homeschooled her for four years, and she went and started going to traditional school this year, which we were kind of excited for her. But anyway, yeah, I would like Bill to introduce himself. Bill's part of our team, our leadership team. If you want to, go ahead, Bill.
Hi, thank you again for having us. It's an honor. I also want to say I'm very impressed to see a school board that stood up and said the pledge of allegiance. Outstanding. My name is Bill Deekman. It's an adopted name. My Indian name is Seglo Bin Tali, which means dog eater. Grandpa thought it was cute that the dog bit me as a little kid, and I bit it back, and so. I'm a former U.S. Marine. I served Desert Storm in Somalia. I was in the Marine Corps from 1989 to 1994. I grew up in Indian country, Oklahoma. We have, between the two cities our families spent most of the time in, one is Lawton, which is right outside of Fort Hill Army Base. The other town was Anadarko, which is also known as Indian City, USA, has one of the greatest Indian museums, if you ever get there. I grew up kind of all over because my mom remarried, and I was an Army brat. But home has been Lincoln, Nebraska since 1980. Anything else?
Thank you, Bill.
I did want to let you know, we, a letter that you sent back to us after you had done the assessment after Brandon. I was really interested in when you suggested that you do have such a history here in Norwood with an Indian mound and artifacts. I was wondering if you had some curricular materials? And I like the idea of hosting cultural events and student field trips since, since right here in Norwood, we have a historical society with artifacts. I'm sure they could bring in to the students' classroom, but I'd also like it to be media. So do you have any curricular materials you could share or any educators who are part of your organization?
Yeah, I'll take that question. We started working on curriculums with other schools around the nation, and we were finding out that most of the schools would kind of like to put together their own curriculum. So we said, okay, you know, we're not going to force you to do anything that doesn't fit your community. We want to work with you, not against you. So what we did was we hired a grant writer, and she's working on grants right now, and she's got a pretty big grant that's coming up. It's called a Cultural Awareness Grant. And what we're doing is we're kind of putting together a packet of what we can do. And we're still kind of working on that, but what we'd like to do is we would like to come to the schools who get certified with your name and your logo and, you know, that we're all okay with it. We would like to actually come to your school at some point, but maybe two or three different tribes and set up a table, presentation, and have it so where your students could come through and they could look over everything that we have, you know, each tribe. Because everybody thinks Indian people are all the same. We're not. We all have kind of the same thing, but we're different. You know, we live a little bit differently. Some of our ceremonies are different. Some of our dance traditions are a little bit different. But we would like to know them, you know, right up to the day, present day, how we live. So that we thought that would be a really good presentation. That way your kids could come through, and they could, we could have pictures, and we could show them stuff, food that we eat, things like that, and let them get familiar. And then they could ask us questions. It would be kind of on a personal level, you know, with the people that we would bring. And then we thought, maybe it's the end of the day, we could probably have like, maybe a little meal. Most of the Indian tribes nowadays make fried bread. They never used to, but they do now, and we sell, we sell or have a lot of Indian tacos. And then we would like to have like a little powwow before we leave that day. At the end of the day, have a powwow and show some dancers, you know, how different tribes dance, how they celebrate. Like on my reservation, we have, it's called the Inipi. We have one once a week, and that's where we are going to the sweat lodge and we pray. That's where I got my Indian name from when I was younger. My uncle took me, he was a spiritual leader. He passed away, but he took me into the Inipi, the sweat lodge, when I was really young. Gave me my fifth-generation grandmother's name. It's Chalampi Washtewee. That means good star woman. And, you know, we get Indian names. The Dakota people feel we need to have one so when we make our journey into the next world, our ancestors will know who we are, because they don't know the language. We feel that, you know, up today, the English language, they never spoke that. So we have our different beliefs. I'm sure Bill has got kind of a little bit of a different, maybe a ceremony with their name. Like you said, he got, he got, oh, he got his Indian name. It's differences of tribes that we want people to understand. The Navajos, they never lived in teepees. Where I live up from the, from our area, we had, we had teepees because we had, we had to use the resources that we could to, you know, make our homes. The Navajos, they had like hogons. They built it out of the red clay that they had. So there's differences. We'd like people to understand our culture, our traditions. I think that would just be really interesting, and, you know, like I said, the end of the day, maybe have, have a powwow and show different dance exhibitions, have a dance exhibition so we can see what a jingle dress dance is, or tradition, or a fancy dancer for men's. It all, they all, you know, have a different variety of meanings, so I thought that would be something that would be nice. And then after we get done, then we will, we could really work with your school. We'd go over your library, see what kind of books you have. Do they fit your area? We could suggest, you know, maybe getting different books. Your teachers could learn from them and maybe start teaching their curriculum the way they'd like to, and your students work with you however you wanted us to. So that's kind of what we've been working on. But is that something that, you know, would be acceptable to you? I don't know. But we would.
Yes, I think, I think our teachers would be very, very interested.
Okay, yeah, so yeah, our grant writer is actually, has a master's degree in education, and she's done it for many tribes. So she's very educated in that area. Plus, we have a couple other people who are very interested in educating. As we go along, we're always picking up people along the way who are really interested in what we're doing, especially in education. So I think we're probably going to be opening up a big field once we get our, our grants going for our educational part of our program. So, yeah, I, we'd be definitely happy to work with you, and when we get that started, we definitely would, you know.
Do you have this service in Ohio? I mean, you describe a lot of really neat things. Are those people able to come to us?
Yeah, we would have tribes that were in Ohio. You have, well, we have the Miami tribe in Indiana that we're connected to, on the Miami, what do they call it? Anyway, they, they supported that junior league baseball team. They supported their name using the Indians in Indiana. So we're in touch with them. I talked with Sarah, their secretary quite a bit, and their tribal chairman totally supports what we're doing, and they, they don't like to see what's happening with our names and images. And, but yeah, that's, that's something we could definitely find people in your area to help teach and to help the teachers. If not, you always have us, the main people, the core people that we have that would work with you also.
... and nearby, and our local culture is based on the Adena tribe. There's a lot, the whole firm, Miami University is up there. So we have an opportunity, we've also been with the Cincinnati Coalition here. There are, there are many opportunities. Some education possible takes here.
And we do a field trip. Now, fourth graders do a whole thing on Native Americans and do the field trip. I've done it twice. It's 40 ancient. And we have a lot of organizations around here that are quite close. There's the Urban Native Collective right here in Cincinnati, also the Miami Valley Council for Native Americans, Lake Erie Native American Council. All love to help us.
Yeah, I think once we get started and roll out the presentation to your school, and you have, you know, have the local media, we'd like to have some press on it so they can see what we're doing. You know, it just makes more sense to people when they can actually see things sometimes rather than just read about it. I think that would be a very good space for your school to, to be accepted, you know, that you really do want to teach about the Native Americans, and that's what we want. We don't want our names and images to disappear. We know, we know that's because it causes harm and genocide to our, to our culture. And, you know, it's like I tell people, all the Europeans that came from here, you all have a place to go back to, and these are your traditions and your. We don't have that. This is our country. This is where we're from. Once it's gone, it's gone. So we really want to really struggle to keep this going as much as we can. We really appreciate your board. Like Billy said, you guys, you know, for talking to us and wanting to get involved with our, with our organization.
Eunice, would you be willing to have a follow-up Zoom meeting with our director of curriculum is here, and maybe some of the lead teachers to really talk about how we can move forward and really enmesh this in the curriculum?
Sure, yes.
Wonderful.
If you can set it up, let me know, and I'll get it, we can do a Zoom call, because we have about three of them right now that we can get on board.
That would be great. So I could send you an email tomorrow, and we could maybe set up some times?
Yeah.
To really follow up? Okay, thank you.
I've also been in contact with some representative from our more local chapters and organizations, and I would love for him to come speak to us. His name is Guy Jones, and he is extremely interested in coming and sharing education with us. And he is right in the area.
Okay, yeah. Whoever you can get to help, that's, that's wonderful. We always try and work with everybody, you know. We definitely don't ever deny anybody because we just feel that there needs to be more education about our, our tribes and the nation here than, than anything.
I want to point out, for folks at home who don't have access to the paper in front of us, the information that you put on specifically outlining, you know, not using the Indian mascot, not personifying that image. It's more of keeping the name. You're not to wear a war bonnet, especially fan behavior is listed here. So there's a, it's laying out the respect of Indian culture and supporting, supporting the name more than, you know, trying to put on a costume or trying to appropriate. So the list that's here, I really appreciate that you put in there specifically about nothing that denigrates Native culture or people. That is definitely important to us overall. The name is something that has become synonymous with an uproar in the community, given that lots of schools have this discussion and have had it, when a lot of it is about respect for the community that it comes from. So outlining that it's how you display it, what you teach about it, how you keep the culture alive. Those are the emphasis that, that we should be bringing forward, more so than what do we call it.
Right. Yeah, the outline, we went together, we put together that outline here about a year ago, and we really, you know, like I said, we don't go to communities and tell you what to do, what you have to do. We don't do that. But we just want you to understand, you know, where we're coming from respectfully, and we do it. You know, I can let Billy talk about some of those customs if he wants to, like the headdress and Billy, if you want to. Good.
Customs for my tribe or?
Yeah, however, just any, using our, using our names and images with respect, you know, like the headdress.
Well, lately, I've been on a, my assignment has been to help try and re-engage the Redskins' names, for, by educating them on the history of the team, history of its name, the term Red being, as a symbol of warriors, not one of the, or a derogatory, well, has been, I've been in a big battle. I'm glad to be at the helm of.
I think we need to mute.
How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's much better.
Yeah.
Okay, super. Sorry about that. I had a, I had an external speaker that can hear you guys.
That'll do it.
I brought a little Tanai back from the Marine Corps. But I, I've been, I've been excited about being a part of the fight to get the Redskins' name back and educate, not only educate, but to change the narrative. Like right now, America has, is really kind of predispositioned to bristle at hearing the word Indian or seeing any kind of imagery, thinking automatically that it's racist, it needs to be erased or eradicated. And it's like, man, we got to change that because nothing could be further from the truth. I mean, we absolutely love seeing our imagery out there. We love seeing our names out there. And the, you know, for the people that don't understand the term Redskin, it is the elite warrior stats. I mean, not everybody, everybody can be a brave if you go to battle, but only the ones proven in battle were allowed to participate in the Bloodroot Ceremony, to paint their skin red to go to battle. Those were the elite warriors. So the term Redskin is really, really honorable. And for me, being a, being a combat veteran, I feel like I'm a modern-day Redskin. I certainly had to paint myself to go to battle, and I just want America to understand where we come from and maybe get away from this, the last, especially the last decade, but it's been going on for longer than that, where the media's really done a hit job on us, teaming up with the not-your-mascot people. And, you know, these are, some of these are paid actors, and it's like, wait a minute, we're, we're getting rid of imagery in history that we can't get back. Like Eunice said, a lot of people's history go from this country to a country where their ancestors came from. And so for us, it's like, well, you know, when I joined the service, my grandma said, you know, if you go to battle, you have to understand, when Indians die in battle, we die twice. And I didn't know what she meant at first, but then it finally dawned on me when I realized, okay, I belong to the dirt that I'm walking on. The United States of America was founded upon my ancestors' lands. So I'm extremely patriotic because I belong to this land, and no matter what the government is, on the year I was born, I have an obligation to defend it.
Thank you for your service.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
So when we talk a little bit about the history, and I'm just going to share a little bit about what's in this document. So we mentioned before that we do have, we do have an Indian Barrow mound that goes back to the pre-Columbian days with the Adena culture that was here hundreds, hundreds of years ago. The current high school, which, which is now, or the high school, Norwood High School, which is now the middle school, was built in 1919. And so from 1919 to 1923, Norwood used the moniker Big Red. And the next yearbook that I could find, jumping from 1923 to 1933, 1933, Norwood changed to use the moniker Indians. So from 1919 to at least 1923, Norwood was known as Big Red, starting in 1933, and they referenced 1932. So for at least 90 years, maybe more, we, we have been known as, as the Norwood Indians. And even, even before then, using the moniker Big Red was in reference to the connection to the Indian Barrow mound that's within the city limits and the school district jurisdiction. You know, that's, that's a lot of history. So, and I think it's important to honor that history. I mean, that's, that's what, that's what this is all about, right? You choose, choose your school moniker for a reason, right? You want to, you want it to be something meaningful, powerful, honorable. And then I think, you know, we've done a good service for that for almost 100 years. So what I would like to do for next week's board meeting is I would like to introduce a resolution where we're kind of outlining why we are the Norwood Indians, looking to work in partnership not only with the Native American Guardians Association, with, with other more local organizations, lay out the recommendations that, that they listed in here, you know, not to appropriate, not to try to dress anybody up or, you know, dawn on a, what do they say, a war bonnet? You know, to, to do this right, and, you know, and I want to do this right.
Ironically, you know, like the logo that we do have, he hears a war bonnet. The Adena culture that we're based on never actually wore.
That's.
Did that involve a discussion to change the moniker to be more representative of the tribe here?
Well, so, so the moniker is the Indians.
Right.
And the icons that we use with that, so there are a number of different icons that, that we currently use. So one, one is the headdress, the Indian, correct? There's another one that is the Norwood and with the feather arrow head spear. And there, and then there's another one, which is the Norwood with the circle around it that's got the feathers coming off of one side, the upper left hand side, which I think is representative, more representative of the Adena culture. Now, the Native American Guardians Association, and Bill and Eunice, I'll let you speak to this, I don't think you saw anything wrong with our use of the Indian headdress as an icon.
Absolutely.
No, no, we never, none of it. I mean, to us, it's, it's good. We have, on my reservation, we have our high school, our school is called the Four Winds Indians. The Teatopah means four winds, Four Winds Indians. And, I mean, we actually, years ago, we were called the Braves, but they changed it to Indians because they felt it was more accurate for our, for our history here. And we have, in fact, I can send it to you, our logo here was designed by one of our Native American guys on our reservation. And it's, it's a warrior-like, it's got two feathers, I think, or three feathers, and it doesn't have the bonnet on it. And so I asked the guy who did that, John Chasky, one of our elders, and he said, the reason he did that is he says, the bonnet, war bonnet was only really worn by the chief, the headman, the head men of the tribe. So he said, what we are is we're warriors. He said, we're Indians, we're warriors. He said, so you have to dress appropriately for that. But he said, if anybody wants, we're the war bonnet. He said, that, that's totally up to them. He said, because, you know, and he totally supports what we're doing. And he was on our, he started our committee here to save our Fighting Sioux name, which didn't work out. But anyway, yeah, so yeah, the war bonnet is, is appropriate if that's what you guys would like. We do have a couple Native Americans in North Dakota who are very good artists. One, one actually did our Fighting Sioux logo. I don't know if you've ever seen that one, but he did that, and it became very famous and very popular. But, I mean, you know, like he's told me, he said, if any of these schools want to work, want me to work with them and design something for them, I can certainly do that. So it's up to you. You know, I, I think the spear, and then you have that circle with the feather going through it, you know, and those are appropriate. Bill, do you see anything wrong with any of that?
I liked everything I heard. I'm like, wow, that, that one sounds cool. That one sounds good.
Yeah.
They all, they all three sounded great to me. You know, what a deep, rich history. I'm, I'm so glad that you guys are fighting for it. That's amazing.
Yeah, it is. You really have, really have a nice history in your, in your state.
All right.
So should we discuss the resolution? Whatever anyone needs to discuss, my viewpoint is I don't think we should be rushing a resolution when we've only talked to them. We have not talked to any local Native American organization yet. I think we should see both sides. Anyone else?
We have constituents in this area who have opinions on both sides of that fence, and I think it would be unfair to listen to both regardless of what the decision may be.
And we should be able to hear from them.
Well, we've heard from several constituents in email.
Well, I mean, organizations. We're hearing from this organization, from people who are in Nebraska and North Dakota. We can hear from organizations that are local.
Especially if you want to look out for an education process.
These are the people who will be right here, ready to help us.
Set up a facility for field trips and education that are relevant to our culture here.
Do educational opportunities here. Yeah, this culture.
Well, I think it's going to be our staff. Well, I think it's going to be our staff that sets up the curriculum and the educational opportunities.
Right, but you want to write a resolution after you've heard from one organization.
Do you have another organization?
Yes, there's the Urban Native Collective. That's the organization here in Cincinnati. Also the Miami Valley Council for Native Americans. That's in Dayton. Uh, we could also reach, those would be the two easiest. Uh, there's also the Lake Erie Native American Council, also councils in Columbus and there's a lot to draw from right around here. Probably in Indiana and Kentucky too. I didn't even try those.
The only ones I know of were the, the one in Northside and the one that's closer to Miami. From Indiana, from Miami. Uh, those are the only two that I know. But I figured we're going to create educational opportunities because we already have a working relationship with Miami University. And we already do field trips up to Fort Agent. These would be great connections to have. So reaching out to places that are right here in our backyard seem like the best place to start.
And would be very important to represent our own culture.
And if we want to have curriculum opportunities that would partner with trips that we already do, those would be the people I'd want to start.
Yeah, so that in no way takes away from any resolution that we would put onto the table right now.
I think that we should hear from them first.
You, you think that's going to make a difference?
So I, I think what I'm hearing though, is you're saying, so clearly we've already stated that there are members of the community, possibly members on this board, I don't know. I haven't spoken with everybody about, um, our moniker. So like I said, obviously we received emails of people that are not in support of this. So we're talking about reaching out to other organizations. So I'm assuming you're talking about other organizations that would oppose our use of the Indian.
I don't know yet. We need to ask them.
But so, but then we're continuing to talk about developing curriculum and all this other kind of stuff. But the constituent, constituents that are emailing us are asking us to get rid of the Indian. They, they don't like the Indian. We've even had some take the liberty of giving us suggestions of what the, the, uh, the moniker should be. So if, if there's no reason to discuss curriculum if we're talking about getting rid of the Indian. I would never.
Maintaining history and educating people in our own community.
That's a separate issue.
Right. And in your resolution, you did mention that we would resolve to work with them when we have local. That, that was part of the resolution.
I don't think Brandon said specifically then, it would just create an opportunity to work with educational groups.
Absolutely.
Oh, I thought you named them specifically.
No, I did not.
Right. He didn't name them specifically. I just think that before we create a resolution, I would like the opportunity here with local groups as well as what they might be able to offer for our district and, and how they feel. If you feel differently, I understand.
Yeah, I, I do feel differently.
I, I agree that a lot of these points.
You don't like local.
Nope, that's not what I said.
I, I think that bringing in a local group is probably a good idea.
I don't disagree with that. I just don't think how that has any bearing to a resolution that we would put on the table.
I don't think hearing.
I think we've heard one side of it. We need to hear some other people. They might agree with them. They might agree. We don't know yet.
Put a resolution on the table that I have not yet seen.
But they are.
Because this is the discussion point. So if we're going to discuss a resolution, I would like the opportunity to see and read that before it's put before me and I have to vote on it immediately. That would give me time, I would say, if we invite someone, we could see the resolution and then be presented with the opportunity to vote on. I'm just saying, we should have time to look at it first. Because I agree, the education points are great. I agree that appropriate use and not appropriation of use are very important key things, regardless of whatever direction the school goes in. We do have a history to maintain, and I honestly don't think that in the last 90 years, Norwood has done a great job with educating its community on our history. We have a tennis court next to that mound. I don't think that's the best use for our ability as a school to educate people on Native American culture. And we should have done better.
But that tennis court's not the responsibility of the school district.
I understand that. I'm, I'm not, but educating our students is. And if we have an opportunity to create better learning opportunities when focused in Native American history, then we as a district should have been supporting that for years. And it hasn't. One fourth grade field trip a year is not.
Fifth grade, it was all there was, half the year you spent on teaching.
It's fourth grade now, but yeah.
But yeah, but you know what I mean? It's extremely limited, and I think some of our community may have lost sight of the history because they stopped teaching it. So I think step one is work on curriculum, work on educational opportunities, especially focused in Native American history and culture, and utilize the resources we have in our backyard to make it not be forgotten. It's, it is our school, it is our history, but where it comes from has lost to the pages. We haven't done a good job of making sure it's prioritized.
Right, but even though, even though in the past, we haven't, you know, we, as I'm talking about the, the Norwood.
Yes.
The Norwood community, doesn't mean that we should just give this up.
I'm not saying give it up. I'm saying the reason you're having such dissonance in our community is in part because we have failed to educate our community on the history that is here.
A hundred percent. And I've responded to every person that's written in as to why this is important.
I think it's time to do something in terms of making those connections to our local groups, creating educational opportunities, working with curriculum development and making more field trips available and educational opportunities available for our district. Need to evolve, start hearing from our local groups and how we can improve those relationships.
Sure. And, and I think that is more of a longer-term, multi-pronged approach to the problem.
But if you want to give me a resolution that supports that.
Sure.
Want to read it first.
Sure.
I don't want to see it next week when I don't have time to read it first.
Sure.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I'm not against a resolution, but I am for being able to be given time to properly vet a resolution. And I don't see it here tonight. So we can't discuss it in full.
Yep. I'm just stating my intention tonight is to put a resolution on the table for us to address.
And what were the parts of your resolution?
Well, it was here Friday. It was here Friday, and it's been changed to put this there because we thought this might be a, a better first step, um, is what Mary mentioned. But basically the resolution just said, for these reasons listed right here from the association, we are formally adopting.
I got a question for Bill. So you use the term Indian. A lot of people think Indian is a bad word. Can you explain to us why the term Indian is not a bad word? And you don't have to use Native American all the time. You, you. I personally, uh, I think I probably, um, when, when PC culture became a lot more prevalent, uh, I grew up calling myself Indian. Our family, our friends call each other Indian. Everything, you know, whether we just were describing where we live as Indian country or selling, I mean, even on the lemonade stands little kids, Indian Lemonade. So it's not a bad word to me. Some people in suits in Washington decided it was at one point in time. And I just hate the idea that all of a sudden I have to say Native American because somebody not from my tribe says I have to. And I have to abandon all the things I love and believe because of an ever-changing political culture. So at this point in time, I look at, you know, I, I have to, um, I have to take it with a grain of salt because everybody who was born in this country right now is native to America. So they're Native American. I do like that distinction of growing up being Indian, being one of the indigenous people of this land. My, as were my ancestors. So I embrace the term Indian. And I'm really, really trying hard to change that narrative. Like I said, that right now, America's, uh, conditioned to bristle at the sound, at the word Indian or Native imagery.
Right. Yeah. And I, I too, I come like Bill from reservation. Everybody calls ourselves, each of us Indians. That's all I've ever known, my grandparents. My parents, my, all my relatives, my ancestors called themselves Indians. I, um, I'm a genealogist and I see a lot of, um, airships from way back when they got the allotment act. Every one of them called themselves Indians. Russell Means was a big actor. He, um, he belonged to AIM. I didn't agree with on everything that he did, his strategy. I didn't agree with a lot of it. But when he, um, talked to Congress, he told Congress, he said, you know, he said, we can, we can, be American Indians can be everything but American Indians. And that, and that says it all because like Bill, I come, I call myself an Indian and I don't see anything wrong with it. I don't see anything negative about it or derogatory. We're Indians. We call ourselves Indians. I don't know why everybody else is not okay with that. I'm, I, and actually I, I go a bit further. I, I call myself an American Indian because first I am a tribal enrolled member. I have dual citizenship. I'm a tribal enrolled member with the tribe enrolled on the reservation. When I go out to the reservation, I am an American Indian. I'm an American citizen. So I call myself an American Indian. I don't like to use the term Native American either. They've called us so many things indigenous, um, Native American, First American, First Nation. They don't even know what to call us anymore, but I still call us Indians.
You know, and I feel like that's part of the cultural war against us, which is what we're fighting right now. And trying so hard to change that narrative because it's, I mean, people think it's offensive or, or they're offended by it, but they don't understand why I'm not. And they refuse to listen. So I'm, I'm very thankful that we've gotten the national voice lately and have been able to, uh, get some media attention that's actually positive for the first time in my lifetime. Uh, so it, it's been, I mean, it's a, it, it, it's a long, it's, it's going to be a long battle. It's an uphill battle for us because everybody believes what they believe and they're, they believe what they've been told to believe and they're not listening to us.
For, to bring back certain terms.
I'm sorry, what was that?
You have an agenda, a very clear agenda that you want, um, certain terms brought back.
I just honestly, I want people to be able to respect us as people and understand what we have to say. And it's, like I said, it's, you know, I don't speak for all natives. I am part of the 90% that is very favorable to, um, our imagery, our names, our history, being out there, whether it be, uh, universities, uh, middle schools, pro teams. Uh, we, we want that. We want to see that. So, uh, like for me, I mean, like if, if I can make a comparison, the people who have decided what is appropriate and not appropriate, how many times have they been wrong with black people?
Right.
It's the, 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 what's considered okay to refer to black folks has changed so many times over the years and it's never been right. And it's not even accurate now as African-American because, uh, my friend is from Panama, but everybody calls him African-American. He hates it. But nobody's listening to him because they feel good about themselves saying what they feel they've been told is right. So it's a tough battle.
I work in the deaf community and that terminology has gone from being negative to now it's being owned by the deaf community and is culturally. Hearing is still, since the hearing impaired is pretty much obsolete in that community. So the terminology goes through phases, just like with anything.
Well, for sure.
Versus ownership of black or cultural. It's different depending on where you are. And I noticed that you also as an organization are called the Native American Guardians Association. So obviously there are people in the Indian or Native communities that do.
Absolutely. There, there are, there really are, especially with 5,000 people that, like I said, not everybody. You, you can't get a hundred percent of people to agree on anything in this world. Yeah, I'm not offended by, I'm not offended by the term Native American. I personally don't, I don't like being told I have to use it. And I don't, I prefer to call. And I'm an American Indian. I too am a tribal enrolled member and have dual citizenship in this, in, in my own country.
So it's more about noticing and recognizing cultural identity first for the Native communities and what they respectfully like to be called.
Well, it's just the opposite of national or, uh, the National Congress of American Indians. They don't like that term, but they call themselves that. They want to get rid of all these mascots or logos. They still have one that looks cartoonish up on there. So, and, and they're against, they're, they're kind of the opposition of us. And, uh, so, you know, we, we both have ways that we want to look at things. Like Bill says, not everybody agrees with us. We understand that. But we do have the majority of the Native Americans in this country that we speak for, the tribal members. We don't speak for the tribal leadership. We speak for the tribal members, the ones that don't have a voice. They're the ones that contact us all the time. Please speak out, keep doing this. We can't lose these names.
In addition, uh, if we had named ourselves the Indian Guardian Association, nobody would have listened to us from the get, they have already, it would have been closed ears from the beginning. And now that we have been able to reach people and help educate it, you know, I think both terms are appropriate. And it, it boils down to personal, uh, desire as far as what each person wants to be called. But you're not, you're never going to be wrong by saying Native American because that's the accepted, that's the accepted politically correct term at this point. Uh, what, if that changes in years to come, which possibly could be. But, um, at this point in time, uh, I really want to be able to get that narrative out there that a lot of us are okay with being called Indian and nobody wants to do it. But you know, it's like, um, you know, and, and you can't, and I, I say err on the side of caution. If you feel you're trying to be respectful and not want to bro, ruffle some feathers, I get it. But, you know, I, I, when I do, when I do seminars, uh, especially for corrections, I, I did a cultural diversity program. And when I did my segment and referred to myself as an Indian from the Kiowa tribe, I had the, uh, the speaker, the, uh, our, our lawyer for, for corrections whispering over top of me every time I said Indian, Native American. I said, wait a minute, you asked me to come here to share with you. But you know, it's like every, 14 times, uh, I was corrected of, I needed to say Native American. So it's, it's not a fun battle.
Mr. Dinkman, you mentioned earlier that 90% are okay with the term Indian. Do you, where did that data come from?
Uh, there've been several studies, um, that have got, you know, polled nationwide.
The Annenberg, the Annenberg is a pollster. Uh, they polls for the Sports Illustrated. They did Washington, Washington, was it Washington Post? I think they did. Yeah, they did it for them. They did about.
The Washington Post one, uh, they actually didn't, they did not care for the results and didn't want to really report though, report that because 90% came back again. They redid, they did another one with Word Association and, uh, thinking that maybe they could get the results they wanted. And strength, pride and proud came up, uh, most frequently, uh, when, uh, presented with the term red skin.
Yeah. So those polls have been done for two decades and the numbers have not changed. Even the liberal, even the liberal media couldn't, couldn't change the narrative.
No, I think what she said, I apologize for interrupting, but I think what she said is the polls have been done for over 20 years. So 20 years ago, they did a poll.
I did see you noted some that were 20 years.
And then a more recent study that's 20 years later and the, the numbers are the same.
Yeah, I can, I can send you the polls so you can look at them. We have, we have.
Are they the same polls you quoted?
In one of the, I said back, yes.
Yep.
I have seen them.
Did you have something, Mike?
Yeah, I got a question. Uh, some of us wear a shirt saying, once an Indian, always Indian. Does that offend?
I didn't hear you. I didn't hear what you said.
There's some of us that wear a shirt are saying, once an Indian, always an Indian. Does that offend your culture? I want one.
Yeah, no. Yeah, no, we gave them to ourselves.
I'm a white male. It doesn't offend you. I'm walking down the street with a shirt, Indian head, once an Indian, always an Indian. Why does that not offend you? Like?
Cause it's beauty. It's true. It's history. It's real. But unfortunately our, our nation is conditioned to believe it's dirty, it's racist. It needs to be erased and stuffed into a, the hole that nobody can find. And that's the hard part about this whole thing. That's why we are quoting, you know, our, 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 our saying is education, not eradication. Because no, I'm glad you guys do. Uh, please wear it proudly.
Right?
No, I do.
Yeah.
I do.
Nothing wrong with it.
I always say, I, I didn't have the honor of graduating from Norwood High School. I attended here, uh, through middle school and then we had to move and I don't remember what my high school moniker actually was because I've always been a Norwood Indian. And I very proudly, I always say that I'm, I'm the proudest Indian that isn't a true Indian because I didn't get to graduate from here, but. But, oh, I was, I was, okay, I was a Thunderbird, Mike said, but, uh, but, but I am a Norwood Indian. I, I proudly wear my Norwood Indian gear. Everywhere I go, I have earrings. I have all sorts of things with our beautiful.
Thunderbirds are Indian.
Indian also, yes.
Yeah. That's a big part of our.
Right. We are woven into this country and never you get rid of us. Never.
All right. Any other questions?
Anything else? Okay.
All right. Well, thank you both for joining us.
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you for asking us. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Take care. Good luck.
Yeah, take care. Bye.
Okay. All right, moving on, um, in the agenda. Item 4.02, we have an update on Shea Stadium and we have Moats here to discuss and. Oh, it's fine. It's fine. Thank you. Bye bye. Um, so, uh, we have modes here to present about Shea Stadium. So I will turn the floor over. I remember Jason. I don't remember your last name. I'm sorry.
Steven Thorpe.
Oh, see, I did read that. I did remember Steven either. Well, I, uh, I messed that up. I apologize. I'll, I'll write, I'll write it down this time. My apologies.
Myself and the votes have been part of getting everything together about Shea Stadium. Come up with a couple more options. So I'll start by saying, once again, the, um, resolution makes it look like these things are a little bit more pixelated when they're on the screen. I do have 10 hard copies of each that if it's okay, since I need to be speaking in a microphone, I will pass them around. If that's all right.
We have a lot of rules.
That's okay. So, um, based on the feedback, everything you're going to see tonight is varsity font on the letters and Gettysburg on the numbers. So as, that's our standard offering. Um, there is such a thing as varsity numbers. There's not any field I'm aware of, um, that we've ever done that has varsity as the actual number. So Gettysburg is what you will typically see on a field. Varsity is the typical letter, that block lettering that you see, um, on the screen now. So the first one that's going around, a couple of distinctions or a couple of notes I'll make here. You've got your red block N in the middle of the field. You've got Shea Stadium in red outlined in white. You have a red border around the field. And then you have Norwood in both end zones in white outlined in red and the blue is navy. Any initial comments or thoughts on this particular one?
I remember there was some discussion last month about, um, color blindness and the use of red for soccer markings on the field. So does this red border that goes around the field and pardon my ignorance, but does that not have anything to do with soccer, that red border?
It does not have anything to do with soccer. So you can't see it. You can see it a little bit better on your paper, but the gray is your soccer line.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say, I noticed the soccer lines are gray and we didn't know yet about the color blindness, but we were wondering there's got to be something. And then a parent did reach out after the meeting and I was like, wow, that is just what we needed to know. And so I'm really glad, I mean, the red lines were cute, but not functional for a disability like color blindness.
Yes, ma'am.
So very important if they are.
Yep. So we are showing them in gray. They can honestly be from a NFHS, NFHS standard. So the, the regulating body on markings can really be just about any color you want them to be as long as they are distinct between the sports. Right? So you can't have white and then have white football markings.
And there's enough distinction. Oh, sorry. Uh, there's enough distinction between the white and gray?
Yes.
In person? Okay. Sorry, Amber.
That's, that's kind of what I was wondering. Like is that, that's a pretty standard deviation between the two is to be gray photography?
Absolutely.
What you'll see pretty much anywhere.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't say pretty much anywhere anymore. It used to be field markings were white for football, red, black, yellow was the other combination. Now folks try to stick with something more along the lines of their quote unquote cap, color palette or whatever their school colors are. So gray may not be a color, but it doesn't, it's not a, it's not like putting yellow out there, which has nothing to do with your, right? Exactly. Okay. I'm going to pass around the next one if that's okay. So the next one, there we go. Um, we have a different logo in the middle. So this would be the N with the spear. You've got Norwood in one end zone, Indians in the other. Um, the end zone letters are red this time with a white outline. And you have a navy border going around the field as opposed to red in the last one. And then Shea Stadium is in white. So while those are being passed around, I will say these are all going to probably look pretty similar. I've got five to share with you. The distinctions from one to the other are, are not going to jump out at you necessarily. You kind of have to look at them next to each other to really see the differences. Um, I think the idea is to say, kind of here are the, the things that we're considering changing. And what are the, what are the group's thoughts?
I kind of like the bright white on this one. I feel for photos. This stands out really well for, for field photography. It's nice and bright. It will pop. A lot of having Norwood represented on both ends of the field, but I do kind of like the end design with this theater. I think it just looks more poignant. Again, they're pop for photos. It stands out as an eye catch right in the center. I'm, I'm OCD, so having less letters on one side, we just, I would start picking immensely.
There's one like that. But I'm like, you're going to see one like that.
Oh, goody.
There's a plan like that. You're going to be happy.
Okay. I'm just getting ahead of you.
No, that's, that's great feedback. Thank you for that. Um, so the next one we're going to pass around is very similar to that, except the end zone letters. Which one did we just send around?
You just did that. Blue with red letters.
Okay. This one has a red border. Should all be looking at 1.10. So Norwood and Indians, this one has a red border going around the outline. That's really the only difference between the last one and this one.
I don't even think I would have noticed that unless you pointed it out. Like I kind of like how the one that's just like all blue where it blends in, like I kind of like that. Like I don't even know that I would have noticed it unless you pointed it out, but.
Yeah. And, and so for some perspective, your current field has white letters outlined in red and it does not have any border around it. Only has the football, uh, four inch sideline markings. Okay. Next one has Norwood in both end zones in white and the Shea Stadium in red and a red border. You like this one?
The red with the red end, uh, Norwood framed in the blue with the white letter pop. And I'm just, I'm thinking photography would be absolutely stunning. It'll show up publicly for any photographer working on it. I've done, I've done parts before and it would just be great. And if red is a problem visually, putting that in the end zone would just blur together for anybody that has that type of visual disability.
So one thing I would kind of throw out there to the group, is there anybody that is that likes the red border over the blue or prefers the red border over the blue? So, so the only, that one. So the only thought that I would throw out is your track is going to be red, but they will not be the same color.
Do you think the blue do better? Just because of.
Just, yeah, so track red is more orange. HGTV on you. It's more terracotta is red.
I mean, I can tell that from here.
Brownner, yeah, orangier, yeah. So just something to think about. Uh, you know, I don't, I try not to have an opinion either way.
I think the red around here, I mean, obviously it's up against the terracotta on each side, but I think having the red border also makes the red that's around the white lettering stand out a little bit more vibrantly. Um, where it might get lost as thin as it is around the letters. It's like framing an art, an art piece. You don't see the subtle undertones until you frame it in the right color.
Sure.
And also if you do the blue around the edge of the outer end zone, then you also off center or it makes it look off center for where your lettering is.
Say that part again.
So if.
Oh, it makes it taller on the ends.
It makes it look taller. It's not, it doesn't look centered, even though it is because you're centering it on a white arm. It doesn't look centered from a distance. It looks like it's shorter.
It's closer to the, yeah, the one side than the other.
I also like the distinction because if you are in the end zone and somebody's like, well, you were in the blue, like, and the blue goes a little further than the line.
Like, sure.
You get a clear distinction of this, the end zone and this isn't.
Yeah, I will say that the, the line is thicker in person than it seems here, right? And if you've got a official there, it's wide enough. I mean, it's, it's the, it's the size that it's supposed to be by NFHS standards. So.
What do the guys think?
I think it's got one more to pass around, right?
Oh.
I do. This one is going to be a bit of a departure from some of the other ones we've looked at relative to the end zone letters.
Did you have a thought on the border, the red versus blue border?
I like the red.
Like Amber, pull your mic closer. You're saying it's hard to hear.
They're hearing me.
Yeah.
I'm pretty loud anyway. So this last one going around has no border on the end zone letters. Blue border going around the field and then Shea Stadium in the white.
Has no border.
Right, right.
It's all.
The letters.
It's this.
And then the lettering tells me border.
Both the letters.
Yeah, the letters don't have a border. I was looking at this border. I was like, I, I see.
But we don't have one like red border, red border.
He's talking about the letters.
Yeah, it's the letters.
Letters don't have a border.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We don't have one with the red border here and then red border on the letter, right?
Uh, the very first one.
Here.
It says red border around the edge and red border on the letter.
Yeah, I think what, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Camp House, but I think the, the hope would be that we kind of land on a general direction so we can ultimately have a, a single concept that we're all feeling good about.
I think on the count of three, we should all hold up the moment like that.
Well, so there's a number on the bottom right hand corner that's individualized.
Yes, sir.
So, um, you, Madam President, you asked if we had any preference.
Well, I was talking about the border specifically, but if you want to, that's not a bad idea to do it for the whole thing, I guess.
So I, I like 1.12. That's my choice.
There's no, no order.
I like different pieces of.
Yeah.
Didn't you know that was going to happen?
Always does.
Chuck, can I have your opinion as well? Cause I missed last month's. Did you like any of these that were presented? I know that you presented something a little bit different and I didn't get to see it.
The one we said.
Red border. And then red.
It's 1.8, right?
Which was, uh,
I'm not sure.
Number eight.
Are you driving?
1.8.
1.8.
1.8. It's my favorite too, Chuck.
Came up with the first, right?
You like, you like the, you like the red border idea? And the simple, simple center.
And there will, there will be some green.
I kept my favorite out this.
For what it's worth.
So I would know.
I want to create my.
I always played a game.
I need, I need a decision tonight. It's the contract next week.
I also want to say thank you to Chuck for putting in a lot of work to, uh, make a design for us. And I, I know he had a vision and I know I've been to the games lately and I've looked at Chuck's vision and I, and I, I appreciate his time and work and wanting to do something really neat for us. I appreciate that.
Seeing what that was.
Or it was, or you saw, didn't see it in the, um, like an email? Cause you were saying, I like the white letters. Oh. You know what? I might, I think I have.
This big, so I couldn't really tell.
But isn't that.
This one.
Just a quick comment on what you're looking at here. This is the closest to what you currently have. It's the same logo. You obviously have Norwood in one and Indians in the other currently, but they're white letters outlined in red.
I do not have it in here sadly.
And you don't have a red border currently. But your current field is going to be closest to this one.
If we want to change because we're spending money to upgrade it because it needs fixed, it needs replaced. It's, it's time. But if we want to look different, then that's something to be considered.
Debbie, I can, I can change my pick if, for one modification. So 1.11. But in the right end zone.
So how do we want to do this? Do we want to each? How, how are we going to do this? How are we going to pick? When everybody, we all like something different with some modifications. Does anybody like one just the way it is? Alice likes this one.
I like the 11 how it is. But like I said.
So you've got 11 and you've got.
I could be swayed to 11.
I'm all for symmetry.
You've got 11. You've got 11, you've got eight.
But I can be swayed to 11.
Brandon, yours goes off of 11, correct?
So 11 and eight are the same, except for the middle logo.
Okay, okay. So Brandon, you want Indians in the right end zone.
Yes.
So you're 11. You can be swayed to 11.
I'm eight, uh, second choice 11.
Okay, you, you're good with 11 Indians in the end zone. What about you?
Back to anything. Norwood, 11 with Indians in there.
Okay.
So yours is closer to 12, but you like the red border.
This one with Indians in this area. I like that. 12 was 12.
12 doesn't have the outline on the letters.
Right. That's why I changed it then.
Oh, and yeah, Shea is different on that one. I wasn't even looking at the Shea Stadium part. Do we want that in white?
I'd like that in white with the.
Shea Stadium in white?
The way 112 is.
Brandon, wait a minute, we're on, but we're talking about 11, right?
Yeah.
So if we put Shea Stadium in white, Brandon on the one.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
11 Shea Stadium in white.
Yep.
I'm for Shea Stadium in white.
Shea Stadium in white.
With the red outline so that it matches the end zone lettering?
Yes. Yep.
Okay, Brandon and Mike, you mentioned you'd like to see Indians in the end zone. You guys.
Norwood. Norwood.
I like the symmetry.
Also symmetry. I'm a fine arts major.
So if you go to any other football field, it's the city in one end zone and the Germanica in the other end zone.
I like Indians too. I like Indians.
I like Indians. Did we make a decision?
Well, we can't vote. It's committee meeting.
No, but I think we'll be getting a consentance done because we have to have something on the agenda to vote.
Right. I need a poll, not a vote.
Not a vote, a poll.
Well, Steve, can you bring back the modifications and have, send this one back for next week so we can see it?
Okay, so basically.
Yes.
You like four point, or you like the 1.9, would you look at 1.9, it's probably going to be the easiest to modify overall, except the letters would be reversed, red, white.
And then a red and a red border.
And a red border.
Right.
So I think it's a.
That's what I just said.
Oh, right.
Oh, no, no, the red border.
This border down around the, oh, would be red.
Oh, that one, yes.
So what I have noted is 11 with Shea Stadium in white and Indians in the other end zone.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Yep.
No, end zone letters. There's, there's probably at least two changes on all of them to get to that, but it's 1.1 Shea Stadium in white. And I, I heard three of five saying Indians and.
Chuck, you like the red border as opposed to the blue border?
Now, how would it look if you spaced the, the letters and Indians out just to give it more symmetry?
Yep. So one of the things we will do is all of those will get laid out. First of all, there's a whole set of submittals that will get signed off on by your designated person to sign off on the submittal. So before anything gets ordered and goes into production, there's a pretty extensive amount of checks and balances that have to happen. All of those letters and that center logo will be laid out on the field for a representative to come out and say, yep, that looks good. That's where we want them to go. You can say tweak it this way, tweak it that way, spread them out a little further. Those are all things.
I gotta think of you space out just a tad.
Well, one of the other things that, one of the other things that we'll try to do is space it just enough so that nothing overlaps a soccer line. Because you're supposed to have a line go through that if a letter's there.
Yeah.
That line should take precedent over the letter, but that's all, those are all things that get adjusted as needed in the field.
Right now it says Norwood on both sides, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I like, I like the way it looks now.
Is it just me or does that W look very large? I mean, I know it's probably the same font or the same size, but it just looks, does it look ginormous to anybody else? It does, but it's a W and they, they do that.
That's just how they are. W's are that way.
I've always thought W next to O too, because the O is more tall and it is wide, so it makes it look bigger, but in this font.
But it leaves this, the center letter and not on one awkward N right now. Like I said, symmetry focus, I think.
Right. When making t-shirts, it helps much to have it.
Oh, that's nice to know.
Shirt, you close a button.
Cause you, you, you line up straight down with the middle of the.
If I, if I'm hearing correctly, 11 Shea Stadium in white, Indians in one end zone.
I think they want the Shea in white with a red outline, is that what?
Correct. Yeah, sorry. Should have been more specific there.
Yeah, reverse.
She's very detail oriented. I know.
Yeah, that, that's something that we could have changed by noon tomorrow and send over to you all to have a peek at.
Does, I, I, I want to get other opinions. I, I'm reading body language and does anybody have anything else to say? Except that you don't decide your mascot.
Uh, there's no mascot there now?
I'm sorry, what is the, you don't decide if you're going to get your mascot. That on your field, you need to do a mind and have a theory for who's going to start.
Oh, taking away the mascot's not on the table.
Just think they need the use of the word Indian versus not use the word Indian. If that happens in the future, then it's a cost, whether it's our board or future board, it is a cost to the district to free you the field again, it can't be a lottery. Um, that is something to consider. If it's not us, it might be someone else.
And Chuck told us last month that the field can last, is it 15 to 20 years? 10 to 15 then? Yeah, so it's a long time.
Yeah.
And, um, we're Norwood on both sides right now.
The longevity of this option saves potential money if downward, somebody else makes the decision, even if this board does not. That is something to consider, future call. I'm not saying it would be, I'm saying it could be, and that is something that might happen. Well, if they, if this board or another board were to change from the Norwood Indians, we still have a big N with an arrow in the middle of the field with a feather on it.
No, that's why I like number eight.
Right. I mean.
It's lasting, it's classic.
I'm, I'm fine with my decision.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with my decision too. How close do you think it would be, like symmetry wise, like spacing it out a little bit more? Would it, would it get closer? Letter that we found.
Yep. Yeah, dimensionally, it's going to be pretty close. The challenge is just Indians has a lot more thin, tall letters than Norwood has. The W.
It's that W.
It's the W.
That W.
Okay, are we finished with that discussion? All right. Mr. Corbeck, thank you.
Thank you.
For coming. Do you need these back?
I could take them if it's easier just like everybody.
How about, I'm going to keep the one that looks the most like the one we're talking about and I can pass it down for recycling. How's that?
Sounds good. No, thank you.
Oh, am I supposed to keep one?
You don't have to.
Hey Chuck, am I imagining something or did they expand the, the, the coaches box? Wasn't there something this year that they expanded the coaches box to the 30?
Yeah, I'm, yeah, we like to keep out.
Okay, so it is 25, okay. Okay.
Thank you, Chuck. Bye. Sure. Thank you. People are not going to use them, so you never know.
Thank you.
Bye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on in the agenda, uh, item five, this is Personnel Superintendent Recommendations, and I will turn it over to Superintendent Mrs. Renan.
Oh, uh, thank you, Madam President. Under 5.01 resignation, we just have one person resigning from a club and we are losing Mrs. Moyers for other employment. And you'll see her replacement in the next section under Employment 5.02. We are continuing to hire educational aides and student assistant aides based on student needs. Then we also have supplementals in item number two running through, these are contract, uh, contracts for teachers who are running like National Honor Society, et cetera. Number three, these are corrections to previous agendas because we do have some of our advisors and volunteers who are switching and moving about. Number four, I'd like to welcome Jasmine Armstrong. She is going to be a, a substitute aide when needed, which is very helpful. Number five is a change in status. Again, it's just a switch of, um, uh, high school advisor from point five to 1.0. Now, when we get to number six, we are starting to, um, hire, number one, are, uh, some folks for winter sports on pupil activity contracts. And also a lot of our after school staff for avenues, as you will see on the next page. We are also, um, hiring individuals, teachers, uh, for homework club at Norwood Middle School and Norwood High School. And, um, also a family engagement coordinator. So, um, beginning of the year, it's what you expect. Lots of folks having to get on board so we can run a great program this year. So, uh, thank you, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Renan. All right, moving on to item six, this is the Education Committee, and I will turn it over to Mrs. Rarica.
Yes, we have a lot of field trips already. That's my favorite. So the Norwood High School marching band will be going to Hamilton, Kettering, Ohio State and Turpin. Uh, Nord High School science class going to Children's Hospital, uh, Norwood Middle School, eighth grade DC, woo. I have an eighth grader this year. Um, Nord High School Health Force Career Fair, Sharpsburg Elementary, YMCA Camp Campbell Guard, that's super fun. Sharpsburg Elementary, Green Acres, love that place. Nordview Elementary, also Green Acres, Nord High School, Mount St. Joseph University, Nordview Elementary, Gorman Heritage Farm, Norwood Montessori School, going to the Cincinnati Nature Center and Row Woods, also very much love that place. Okay, and then next we have a new textbook for the high school in social studies. Is anyone going to tell us about it? Awesome.
So we bring this to the board last.
We didn't bring this to the board last year because we did have a current adoption, but we just had, um, very few textbooks. We had very few students interested in that particular course. And so we thought we would use up that, use up those, um, licenses that we had and those texts that we had, and we would keep looking for other resources as it got closer. Well, we had a very, a significant increase in students interested in this course. Um, so much so that when I went back to the textbook company that we worked with, um, that had this previous adoption, they said they couldn't fulfill it with the old adoption because they want to encourage you to start new. So luckily we like this, the, uh, the addition that we had, the same textbook, same authors. This is an updated version. It's a 2024 and with AP courses, you should keep them only for that 10 year period of time and then you need to, um, do a newer updated version. So because the company could not supply our needs, and although I might have been able to piecemeal the textbook, I wouldn't have been able to put together the online support, which is crucial for those students. So we needed to, um, do a pivot and do their latest adoption. So we're pleased about it. It's not that we didn't want to do the adoption. That particular group at the department, likes to, um, save you all money. And so I think that was their interest last year, like we can wait, we can wait. Um, but we need to move forward now or we'll be, um, not where we want to be with creating the resource. That's the same company that did our, this, this, these materials that we just adopted earlier? Yes, that we did a lot at the high school level from Savis, which is, uh, used to be called Pierce. So yes, they like a lot of, um, that particular funny. They feel like some of the authors, you know, by the time you get to high school, you look at key authors and who's offering your biology books or your social studies books and who does a really good job. So they look for key authors. So, um, they're pleased, they're pleased with that company. Everything is, and the online support is crucial for preparing for AP exam. It has the same support. It does. The translation, all those key features that all of our other high school, I think all but one was from Savis that the high school adopted, high school. I think he said, like sociology, something, one of the side courses that didn't have. Yeah, didn't have quite the right fit, so we used perfection. Yeah, it's a good move. And this is for, for AP. AP, um, human geography, yes. High interest AP class.
Yes. I heard from an AP advisor, that's the first one you should take.
Could be true.
And then my kid.
So we're actually ahead of, of that division. So I like that the new path that we're on with these materials is actually meeting and exceeding the standard that's about to affect the state of Ohio.
That's good.
So yeah, it's really good. Okay, moving on, item seven, this is Policy Committee, and I will turn it over to Vice President Taylor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm actually going to turn it over to Mrs. Chesson.
All right. Thank you, Vice President Taylor. We have three policies and one regulation that will be up for your consideration this evening. The first one is Minutes Policy BDDG. So, um, we have a minutes policy that we've used for quite some time. Um, and this policy, it aligns more closely to revised code and to case law. So a couple of changes you'll notice, um, in the policy is that we would be doing the permissive language that allows, um, copies to be sent to the board two days prior to your next meeting. So, um, we'll waive the reading of the minutes and then we'll allow, um, the minutes once you approve them to be shared with the public and the news media. Let's see. That's the biggest copy, the biggest changes in this, um, in this reading is that all the corrections will be made before the next regularly scheduled meeting. And then we'll share them with the public once you approve it. But that one is a pretty easy. The next policy is, um, EHA, which is a data and records retention policy, but they're doing a name change for this policy. So now it's going to be called the District Records Commission Records Retention and Disposal Policy. So in this policy, this is an interesting policy because they are clarifying the commission's responsibilities when adopting or revising any records retention moving forward. Um, we have a current schedule of disposing the records and it happens one time a year. And this does not change that. The updated policy will distinguish between disposing of records that appear in the district's approved records retention schedule and the disposal of obsolete records. The records, um, retention meeting follows all open meeting acts, so that won't change, which means that just like our regularly scheduled meetings or our special meetings, the time, the location and the place of the meeting will all be shared with the public. We choose to do that through our district's website, so we will continue that. Most of the language is the same language, but it's just been moved so significantly that they decided to, um, make some many, some changes. So it's divided into three different segments. Who's a part of the District Records Commission? What the records retention schedule is and how we dispose of the records, um, both what is a regular records retention and the obsolete records. So, um, that's part of that policy. Along with that policy, there is a regulation. And currently, um, regulations are just the procedures that guide our work, that guide the work of the board and then thereby everyone else's work. So in this records, in this regulation, it's Regulation EHA dash R. And they're asking us to rescind this regulation because they feel that based from the, the language from the Ohio History Connections, local governance, and also the Ohio Electronic Records Committee, that email and social media platforms are just a medium for conveying records. And as a result, the retention or disposal of email messages and social media content must be related to the information they contain, not just the medium that they, um, have. So they would follow all of our typical records retention that we would have. They recommend that we continue to review, um, the information, but it's not worthy according to OSBA of a separate policy or a separate regulation. So they're recommending that we rescind that regulation. And then the last policy is Policy JED, which is the Student Absences and Excuses Policy. And, um, it's been updated to reflect and remove references to considerations specific to COVID-19. So all of the COVID-19 reasons for excuses have been removed. And moving forwards, absences are categorized into two areas medically, um, and non-medically excused absences. Some additional reasons fall under the category of emergency that you'll see in these policies or other set of circumstances in which the judgment of the superintendent would be used to determine if it's a good and sufficient cause as an absence for school. So those are the changes that you'll see in the student absences and excuses. So a small group, um, but just a couple of policies to revise and then one regulation to rescind moving forward.
Thank you, Mrs. Chesson. Moving on, uh, in the agenda, number eight, this is Building and Grounds Committee, and I will turn it over to Ms. Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. We have three items. The first two are the Seven Hills Summit Country Day Schools for swim team practice, and they have worked out a schedule that'll take them from fall into winter months. And the third is for inner city soccer to have practice and games at Shea Stadium. And the third is for intercity soccer to have practice and games at Shea Stadium. At various dates, and that'll be later in the season through spring.
Thank you. Um, item nine on the agenda, this is the Finance Committee, and I will turn it over to our Treasurer, Mrs. Camphouse.
Thank you, Madam President. Nine point oh one, the financial reports, all monthly reports, the CFO report and our final change order listings are attached for your review. I'll be working on a document to show the final costs of construction and the added scope, which will be substantial due to the savings encountered during the project. Nine point oh two, temporary appropriations, which is our current budget. This will be permanent in October. Shea, um, Shea remodel bid opening this Friday, we have a scheduled bid opening. Um, I believe it's at eleven. And um, at next Thursday's meeting, you will hopefully be approving a contract to start this remodel project. Nine point oh four, Shea track and field replacement. After choosing the scenario tonight, I will have the contract on the agenda for next Thursday's meeting for your approval. This purchase is a qualified consortium expense requiring no bidding for the project. Nine point oh five, Williams Avenue Certificate of Substantial Completion. This is the final approval to close out the Williams Avenue Elementary renovation project, including the final payment to the general contractor. Yes. Nine point oh six, Norwood High School Certificative Substantial Completion, this is the final approval to close out the high school renovation project. There's still just a few minor projects um, going on there, and uh, we have not, we will not be releasing the final payment on that one yet, we're still working through a few things. But this is the start of our warranty period and um, substantial completion. Nine point oh seven, Capital Improvement Plan and Budget. Our taxpayers approved a two point five five mil permanent improvement levy in November of two thousand and sixteen to provide funding to maintain our century old buildings. This budget documents the projects we expect to be upcoming, estimate the cost of such projects to be paid for, PI levy. By creating and approving a capital improvement budget, we are prioritizing our repair plans and setting aside funds to complete that work. We can also review expecting ending cash balances to make sure that our permanent improvement balance stays healthy. This plan is subject to change and will be updated at least annually, probably in the fall. Nine point oh eight, approve a secondary signer at STAR. STAR Ohio is an investment um, that Norwood uses for um, our immediate cash. And they have mandated a secondary signer for every public entity to invest there. We've discussed this in Finance Committee to ensure that internal controls stay strong. And we have planned to move forward to be compliant with STAR's mandated changes. The board will approve a secondary signer at our next board meeting. Nine point oh nine, Norwood Ready, Norwood Ready Kids uh, contracts, this is our annual agreements for our Ready Kids Program to serve our youngest learners. Nine point one oh, elementary building security projects. To approve the purchase orders to install updates to exterior security of our elementary buildings, some of this project will be paid for with K to twelve Ohio Security Grant Funds. And while we already have a strong security um, at all of our buildings, this is even improving that. Nine point one two, Consortium of School, of State School Board Association. Amber Ballard has been invited to present for the Consortium of State School Board Meetings. If chosen for this honor, Ms. Ballard will highlight our hard work to promote and protect Ohio, Ohio's public schools. Next week, you will be approving the travel costs that will arise if she is selected to promote for us. Nine point one three, Special Education Agreement with UTS to provide travel arrangements and order to meet IEP goals for one student. And finally, nine point one four, then and now purchase orders, and just a few purchase orders that require further approval from the board. And that is everything.
Yeah, nine point one one.
What, did I miss one? Yes, that is just a modification of that contract to move her start date a few days earlier. Um, so that is nine four, nine, uh, August fourteenth, so that I can pay her for those days.
Okay, thank you for catching that. All right. Uh, item ten, we have adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
All motion.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Time is seven thirty five, we are adjourned, thank you.